Welcome to the Bothell City Council Regular Meeting of July 19, 2016. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Okay, roll call. All council members are present except Councilmember Spivey, who will be hopefully able to call in for AB 16-130, which is the Fitzgerald area discussion. So next on our agenda is the review of upcoming public engagement opportunities. And we have budget conversations Thursday, July 21st from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. and August 11th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Bothell Library with our Director Tammy Shackman, Finance Director, sorry, Tammy Shackman. Special City Council Meeting, July, I'm sorry, Tuesday, July 26th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Limwood Community Band will be playing Tuesday, July 26th at 7:00 p.m. at the Park at Bothell Landing. Coffee with the Cop will be Wednesday, July 27th from 8:30 to 10:00 a.m. at the Social Grounds Coffee and Tea Company. Council Conversations Thursday, July 28th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Bothell Library. And the Waste Mobile will be here Friday, July 29th through Sunday, July 31st from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Seattle Times Building. So meeting agenda approval. I have one change to the meeting agenda and we'd like to move up the City Manager's Report to after the consent agenda, if everybody's okay with that. That's good. Is there any other changes to tonight's agenda? Councilmember Sandberg?
I wanted to pull the April 5th meeting minutes and then also have a minute to alert the public to a potential scam that's going around.
Okay, we'll do that just after this, okay?
Thank you.
So the agenda minutes for April 5th have been pulled from consent. Is there any other changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none. The projected agenda, is there any changes to the projected agenda? Seeing none. Okay. Councilmember Sandberg, give us the lowdown.
Regarding the April 5th minutes or the scam?
No, the scam.
Oh, the scam. So a citizen brought to my attention that she and possibly others have received in the mail a very realistic-looking check from a bank for several thousand dollars with the claim that you've won the Publishers Clearinghouse sweepstakes. It looks very official. I'm sorry, I didn't bring a copy to put it on the reader there, but just to be aware that that is not a real, it's not a real winning check and that if you, I'm not sure what the consequences are, but if you cash the check, I think they contact you and potentially then you pay additional fees. And so, anyway, if you think you've won big from Publishers Clearinghouse, you probably haven't.
All right, thank you. So the consent agenda, we have had one item polled, so I guess half of item A polled from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew to approve the consent agenda minus the April 5th, 2016 meeting minutes. See if our buttons work today. Place your vote. Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Spivey absent and excused. And so now we have the April 5th meeting minutes. Councilmember Sandberg?
You have a copy of the revised meeting minutes before you, so probably about page five in, there's some red text. And I went back and I reviewed the tape and then I asked the city clerk to also review the tape to confirm my interpretation. And so I have the suggested language before you. And I would just add that we put the word "consumer" in quotation marks as well. And I know that seems very detailed, maybe overly detailed, but when I went back and I listened to that tape, we had a long conversation about whether "safe and sane" should be in quotation marks. And so I think it's just appropriate to have the word "consumer" in quotation marks as well. And so I would make a motion unless anybody has any questions.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the April 5th, 2016 regular meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second it. Sorry, Deputy Mayor has seconded it. So a move by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by Deputy Mayor to change the wording in page five of our minutes with the red text, I guess, that we have in here that's added, add the word "safe and sane" parenthetically after the word "consumer" with parentheses in the advisory ballot language. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion during deliberation? Councilmember McNeil?
So what would the language actually read on the ballot measure? How would it be stated?
I don't have that in front of me.
Can I? Can I enter?
Do you have the information in front of you?
I don't. So when I read the original minutes, it said to replace the word "consumer fireworks" with "safe and sane fireworks." We had a long discussion and we settled on, which was Councilmember Spivey's amendment, which was to add the word "safe and sane" parenthetically after the word "consumer" in the ballot language because my main motion included it in the resolution. And then when I saw those meeting minutes, then I wanted to make sure that I knew what the advisory ballot language was that had been submitted. And I don't know if we have submitted the language already to the two counties.
I'm getting a no from the city clerk.
We have not, but the ballot language is correct. I reviewed it today. So what we will submit will be correct and we'll submit it probably by the end of this week, beginning of next. If you want, I can send it out to the council prior, just so that you can see it before it goes, but we have not submitted it to the counties yet.
I mean, if you want, I can pull that meeting back up and I can read it into the record right now.
I think we're okay. If you're okay, this is just the meeting minutes and then she'll send it out and verify with us about the, the city clerk will send it out and verify with us that the language is correct before we submit it to the counties.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the motion is in order to approve the April 5th minutes with the amendment that has been made. I think it was moved and seconded already. So just go ahead and vote, place your vote.
Geez. Where was I?
I don't know. Passes five and an abstention by Councilmember Freed and Councilmember Spivey is absent and excused. Did you want to speak to your abstention?
Yeah, I was absent that night, so I'm not going to say what was discussed.
Okay. All right, so City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had our council and staff team building and goals workshop this weekend and there were several things came up on that that are affecting upcoming scheduling. So one of the discussions was the Capital Facilities Committee meeting that meets in August. That has traditionally been like a three-person committee. And the discussion was that the entire council might want to set in on that. So the idea would be to make that a committee of the whole meeting, so anyone could attend if they want. But we also were looking at some date changes. So we want to see if the Friday midday, August 12, instead of the Tuesday, the 9th, would work. And then Monday, August 22nd, those are the two dates that we're suggesting if, I don't need an answer from council tonight, but if you can check and see if those would work, hopefully we'd have majority of council if everybody can't make it, the more we can. It was a fairly detailed report and I think the sense was it would be valuable to have more than just a committee review, that the entire council, it's half the city's budget. So the idea was to really work on that and then fold that into the budget. So the Capital Facilities Committee or Committee of the Whole. The other thing was we do have the special meeting coming up, which was on your forward-looking agendas, but for next Tuesday, there's a couple of small items there, but the bulk of it is kind of a look back, a review and a preview of the revenue and expenses history. So kind of a financial snapshot, building on our finance discussion we had.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
What time were the Capital Facilities Plan meetings on the two dates you gave?
Well, they were, at this point, because they were a committee, they were kind of during the workday. That's the other question is whether we need to move them to an evening. And that may be something you need to check your schedules on and let us know what works. They were scheduled 10 till noon on those days, but those can go to the evening if that, you know, helps get more council members there.
Okay, thanks.
So if you let the clerk or myself know on your availability on those, we'll plan that accordingly. The council, I mean, oh.
Councilmember Freed?
Who serves on the Capital Facilities Plan?
Those three.
Those three. I had the honor of serving on the first Capital Facilities Plan a long time ago. And what I liked is there were three council members and staff and there was a really free flow of communication and I felt that process worked really well. We, as a council, still had it come back to us as a whole, as we always do. I'm fine with keeping it as is unless there's been some other discussion in my absence.
Well, let them get to the discussion on the council retreat. That'll probably help a little bit.
We, and we, the idea was that we want to keep that free flow of ideas and exchange, but the thought was that yet doing it twice. And so the thinking is use it as a committee of the whole, which implies that interactive discussion format, not a more formal setting. And the idea was to do it in a conference room where you could get that discussion around the table, still be recorded, but the idea was use a committee of the whole format. There was also discussion during the retreat about the city hasn't actually had a finance committee and that maybe either this process or a separate process might morph into a finance committee. And that's a discussion that hasn't been settled, but that was a part of the discussion over the weekend. So I'll turn it back to you in a second, Mr. Mayor. There were two action items, though, that I wanted to pick up under the manager's report. One is, we did talk about the Port of Seattle is doing local community grants for economic development and they're per capita based. So we would get a grant of about $42,000. We would match that with our own local money. And the suggestion was that we would use that to get the Canyon Park master planning work going. It won't, it'll be a multi-year effort, but this will be at least a good start with the Port's grant and our grant to get that Canyon Park area planning, get that going, so that we'll button up what we're doing in downtown over the next few years, but hopefully be ready to then start focusing on the Canyon Park neighborhood. So we're going to go ahead and do that unless there's direction from the council to hold off. And we think that's the best use of those funds. So I'll leave that as a, if I don't hear any objection, that's what I'm going to do. And then I'm going to introduce Dean because we did also, at our prior meeting, we talked about getting proposals for the city manager recruitment process. And we do have proposals back from all the consultants that we approached on that. And Dean can, we talked about the summary results, but Dean has an update on that from the weekend, so.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Hopefully you've had a chance to review the agenda bill that I put together yesterday. We did receive four proposals from our RFP for the city manager executive search. It was a very quick turnaround time. The four qualified that submitted were reviewed yesterday. We evaluated based on experience, cost, references, dependability, and responsiveness. And cost certainly was a factor, but not the major factor. Overall, the recommendation from staff is to go with Slaven management consultants. They came in at under 25,000, they were about 23. And one of the major components of the RFP was that we needed a recruitment, a fairly quick recruitment of about 120 days or less. So they came in at about a 60 to 90-day recruitment process. And then the second recommendation would be Prothman, Prothman Associates is somebody we're very familiar with. They came in a little bit higher and their turnaround time is about 120 days. Recommendation tonight for your council is to approve Slaven and allow the interim city manager to sign a professional services agreement.
So because this isn't an agenda item, do we take a formal vote? Is that what you need? Motion to vote?
Yeah, it's a regular meeting. You can add any item to a regular meeting agenda. I didn't have a place by where to place it, but that's why I brought it up under manager's report. But yeah, if we want to get this thing going and hopefully have community involvement in the process and community involvement in the interviews, I'd like to get the ball rolling on that as soon as we can and hopefully around Thanksgiving time, be talking about who the next manager is.
Okay.
So yes, you can take action tonight.
Is there any council members with questions? The staff? Do you do? Councilmember Agnew?
Yes, I'm going to recuse myself. I know one of the owners of one of the companies.
Okay. Councilmember Sandberg?
It's a process question. So normally we add agenda items during our meeting agenda approval section of our meeting, which we've already gone past. We didn't take that opportunity to add this agenda item. So are we legally allowed to just add an agenda item at any point during the meeting?
Yes, by motion of one of the council members and seconded, you can.
Okay.
Is there any discussion or questions about the staff recommendation for search? Yep, Councilmember Freed?
Thank you. City Manager, you mentioned that there would be a public process in the proposals, Dean, maybe you know as well. Was there a process that was discussed where the public has participation?
We had a general discussion of it. Dean and I haven't fleshed it out, but what I would like to do is either concurrent with or separate as input when the consultant's out here to interview the council members as to what you're looking for in style and skills and mix. I'd like to involve the community in that. One quick way to do it without a big hoop-to-do technical term, one quick way to do it is to have each council member designate a member of the community that you'd like to have meet with a consultant and do that either at the same time the council's doing it or individually. And council hasn't really talked about whether you want to do individual meetings with the consultant or you want to do it as a group. So, but the idea would be to get community input and council guidance at the front end. And then the suggestion that I would make, and I've worked with actually all three of the firms that were the finalists, but all of them have used a combination of basically a three-part panel interview where you have a community panel, a staff panel, and the council. And then the community panel and the staff panel report to council at the end of the day. And then you say thank you and you and the consultant go in to decide who you want to make an offer to, so. But I think we do the community involvement at the front end and at the time of the selection process itself, unless council has different thoughts. That's what I would recommend.
Okay, great, thanks. I appreciate that. And I feel like Councilmember Sandberg, I don't know that it would hurt just to make a vote next Tuesday. It always feels awkward to make a motion on the very night, even though this doesn't seem like a controversial issue regarding hiring a consulting firm. But if we do hold off the next Tuesday, I would certainly be in support of that.
It's just one more week, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, yep.
If there's, well, it's just a week, I guess. As you say, if there's a general sense and you want to actually formalize it next Tuesday, then I could call the consultant, get the ball rolling, and we wouldn't lose a week at all. But if you change your mind, that could be awkward, so.
I'm comfortable doing it tonight. I don't know about the other two council members that are up here.
I'm comfortable.
You want to wait, too? Okay.
We'll put it on Tuesday.
We'll put it on next Tuesday. Do you guys want to give some feedback or do we let's not even bother doing that because you don't want to call?
Let me outline the community involvement process a little more and flesh that out rather than just discussing it tonight. Let me get you something on what I'm suggesting and that might, we may get some public comment and ideas on how they'd like to do that, too. But at least that, give a little more substantive, so we'll make it a little more formal.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good?
Next Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Okay, so that leaves us at the visitor's section. So let me read the piece of the protocol manual real quick. So this is the time in the meeting that each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. All remarks will be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through the members of the council, without the permission of the mayor. And the first person is Geraldine Anderson. Welcome.
You even said it right. Thank you very much. My name is Geraldine Anderson and I am here tonight on behalf of the Crisis Clinic for the entire King County area. I am a trustee, a volunteer on that organization's board, and I'm here tonight to thank you for your financial support. I will be handing out some information for you that you can take away, but I want to summarize what you have purchased this year, or in 2015, actually, and continue to support, along with all of our other municipalities that support us. In 2015, you funded us for $8,558. That money took in for our crisis line, 933 calls from Bothell residents that were in crisis, depressed, needing intervention of one sort or another, considering suicide. And as they call, our clinical staff assess their need, determine where they need to be, whether they need to be seen right away, whether they should go to the emergency room. If there's a next day appointment that they can wait for, we can set that up. In addition, your public service officers, your clinical staff in the city, contact our supervisors to get referrals and guidance on what to do with an individual that they're encountering. So that is a 24/7, 365-day-a-year service that we provide. Similarly, we have a 2-1-1 resource line. The 2-1-1 resource line is also available to anyone in need of a basic need, whether it's housing, or food, or childcare, or subsidized utility payments, whatever. And we do more than just give them a name and a phone number and send them on their way. We advise them on how to advocate for themselves and how to work through the process that they're about to encounter. So from there, we also have two very critical services that you assisted us in providing this year, and that is for teens. I want to call to your attention that the second highest cause of death for teens in Washington State is suicide. So out of Bothell, we received 26 calls from Bothell teens to our Teen Link service, which is a teen-to-teens connection that a person who is distressed, whether it's over their parents, or their girlfriend, or school, they can assist in that regard. Similarly, we have also trained, I think something just happened, did I go over three minutes?
That was three minutes. It went by quick, didn't it?
Wow. Okay. We also trained 57 different schools and teen groups and classes on prevention suicide. So I just am here tonight to thank you for your support, your financial support.
Thank you very much. We have a comment from Councilmember Freed.
Yes.
I have my master's in counseling. I love the work that you're doing. I used to counsel all the kids that started fires in King County and certainly worked with a lot of people that were dealing with suicide. What kind of staff training do you have? Are you licensed counselors?
We are. Important question. And while I don't do that, my background is also in public mental health. We have clinical supervisors on every shift. We train extensively before someone mans a phone line. And then we pair with them and we listen in. I mean, it is a very critical piece of our skill, so.
Well, the work that you do, I highly appreciate and is highly valued. So many people hurting in our community don't reach out.
Absolutely.
They think they're going to be strong and try to deal with theirselves, so they don't open up. So I'm glad there's a resource where people can reach out to you with a true heart to help people on the time of need.
Thank you very much.
Bless you, thank you.
Thank you.
You've got a couple more questions up here. Are you ready to entertain some more questions?
I will, as long as the buzzer doesn't go off.
Councilmember Agnew?
How many calls did you get from the city of Bothell and the Crisis Clinic?
The Crisis Clinic received 933 calls from Bothell.
From Bothell, wow.
Yes, and that'll be on the material I'm about to give you. Do you want it now? I can.
Yeah, go ahead and give it to the clerk there.
Okay.
And then we have one more question for you from the Deputy Mayor.
So I was wondering, how do people know to call you? How do you reach out, what's your outreach?
That is a great question, as they all have been, but, and I value the interest. We have everything from cards and flyers and mailers, and we have a website, and we have Facebook and Twitter feeds. The sides of buses have been used as a vehicle. We've got billboards. It's just everywhere we can think to provide it. And we translate into several languages as well. So in different communities, there's different ways. And all of the community mental health centers who provide counseling and physician support, they know of our services as well.
So you're in schools or, I mean, your information is in schools?
Yes, we do a huge training program at all of our high school, all kinds of high schools, where you go in, I've sat through one not too long ago, where we have a health class and we go in and talk about what do you do if you're feeling depressed? What are your things that you can do? How do you help a friend who may be depressed or is struggling? So we teach them coping skills and if needed to call the Teen Link. But to provide for them their own resources to help one another. And we get great feedback on it.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the work you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Oh, you want, okay. Next person is Suzanne Burnell. And that just reminds me, we do have multiple public hearings tonight, so there'll be an opportunity for people to speak during those public hearings as well. Floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Suzanne Burnell, licensed geologist and hydrogeologist in the state of Washington. And thank you, yeah, I need to leave early, so I appreciate the time now. I have submitted my written comments for the public hearing and I just wanted to highlight a few key points from those written comments. The first is that the agenda packet for the Fitzgerald subarea talks a lot and references a lot about excavations, test pit excavations. But none of that data has appeared in the parametrics, best available science, technical memos. There's no information about where those locations are, who did them, why the test pits were dug, and who in fact logged the test pits, what qualifications they had. And there's no recognition in the agenda packet that those test pit excavations are really just a single point in time. And they're valuable, they have use, but they don't, you know, acknowledge seasonal fluctuations, they don't, they can't be used to assess groundwater flow conditions, infiltration rates. And so they have limited use. And so that needs to be acknowledged somewhere in the agenda packet. And if we're making regulations based on test pit excavation data, that should be publicly available and very transparent. Secondly, there seems to be in this current agenda packet, a real focus on minimizing the importance of the shallow groundwater aquifer. And I'm puzzled by that. We've had three different reports over many years citing the importance of groundwater flow into, from the shallow groundwater zones into North Creek. They provide cold water during low-flow periods of the summer. And the report, the packet doesn't really have any technical defensible arguments, it's a very vague kind of arm-waving summary. I also looked into critical areas ordinance, and we talk about protecting groundwater using critical areas ordinance. And I've included an excerpt in the memo I submitted tonight. And basically, unless you have a sole-source aquifer, drinking water aquifer, and you designated a critical recharge area, you don't have groundwater protection. That's the only designation. You have the critical aquifer recharge area and that allows you to designate groundwater protection. We don't have that across the Fitzgerald subarea. And I guess one of the things I want to say is this is a complex issue. There's a tremendous amount of history here, it's confusing. And this particular agenda packet was unfortunately poorly written and quite confusing when it comes to some of the technical issues. And I want to read just one sentence to you, and this is typical. And I want to read just one sentence to you, and this is typical of the agenda packet. This refers to Zone 1. It says, just about the background, it says, this is one sentence. "There is legitimate reasoning to treat the hillside areas within the Niffachakwa differently than other areas because, while present, there are few critical areas in this area. The land's drained to a different surface water sub-basin, and the test pit data, though not specifically developed for this purpose, does suggest that the shallow aquifer may be at a depth to allow more grand disturbance than allowed under the current regulation, provided appropriate protections are included." I would just like to conclude by saying, we need clear communication so we can talk about these issues. We all want to wrap this up, but language like this doesn't help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is David Bain. David Bain, did you want to wait till the public hearing, or would you like to speak now? Okay.
Hi. I'm David Bain, and I also have concerns about the proposal for the Fitzgerald subarea. I feel like the process that we started was excellent, but it was not finished. Parametrics presented a lot of ideas to all the stakeholders, and we got the opportunity to react to those, but we never got a chance to talk to each other. So, you know, we can't say, we didn't have a chance to say, well, you know, this doesn't work for us, that doesn't work for you, with some other alternative work. And I think because of that, we're likely to end up with something that is going to lead to ongoing conflict, rather than the certainty that everybody's been hoping for. For example, one of the ideas Parametrics put forward was, if somebody wanted to develop one-acre lots, then they'd be allowed to do that. The notion being that a healthy environment consists of up to 10% impervious surface, and has at least 60%, 65% forest cover, and that somebody developing a one-acre lot typically would meet that criterion. However, the Fitzgerald area is already about 20% impervious surface, and under 40% forest cover. And citywide, we're doing even worse, meaning our existing regulations are not providing the level of protection that a healthy city would have. So if you're starting in a pristine area, you know, doing one-acre lots is fine, because people probably use about 10% of the lot for impervious surface. But when you're starting with an area that's already over the line, and you lose 10% of what's left, you continue to lose ecological function. A lot of the LID ideas they had are fine as far as surface water goes, but they don't address the other ecological functions of a property, for example, forest cover. And, you know, we didn't have a chance to discuss those other aspects. There was not a lot of support for innovative ideas, and I think, given the propensity for certainty, that's probably reasonable. But, you know, you may want to have a hybrid code that says, if you want certainty, you can follow this pathway. If you want to try innovative, you can take your chances on something else. So I think we really need another round of public discussion before final decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else has signed up for the public comment period. Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comment now? Again, we do have public hearings later in the meeting to take public comment for those items as well.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead, go to the mic and give us your name.
My name's Steve Richards, and I'm from the Wayne Golf Course. And we just received a letter lately about Phase 3 of the 522 project on the Wayne Curve there, and just came to get some more information on that, and thought it is on the agenda tonight?
It is, yes.
Okay.
It's a little later on.
Okay. That was my only question.
Okay. Great. Thanks for coming.
Question.
Councilmember Sandberg.
For the speaker, and maybe for staff as well. It sounds like they've received one communication. And is there anything that you can tell Mr. Richards now about, if he's coming here for just additional information, maybe what the process is? Because when somebody gets a condemnation letter, or they see condemnation in an agenda packet, that sometimes raises a flag, and it really, it really isn't as bad as it sounds, I've found. And so I was wondering if maybe staff could maybe just talk a little bit about the process? I know that we're going to talk about it later tonight.
In the interest of time, Councilmember, Jason Torrey, the project manager's in the back of the room, so Mr. Richards can speak with him as well and get some answers to his questions.
So let's do that, and we'll move on with our agenda. And then Mr. Richards can stay and ask questions during the public hearing. Okay. So where are we? We're on new business. AB 16-128 is the Considered Appointments of Pro and Con Committees for the Fireworks Advisory Ballot Measure and the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy Lid Lift for the November 8 election. And we have Peter Trosen, the Assistant City Manager, to kick us off.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. Tonight, you're being asked to designate pro and con committees for two ballot measures, an advisory measure to ban fireworks, and a levy lid lift to support the maintenance of streets, sidewalks, and crosswalks. On April 5 of 2016, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 1344, placing an advisory ballot measure before voters regarding the sale and discharge of consumer fireworks in the Bothell city limits. On June 28, the Council adopted Ordinance Number 2193, for the purpose of submitting a Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy Lid Lift. Both of these ballot measures will go before qualified voters on the November 8, 2016 general election. The Council is now responsible for appointing pro and con committees for each measure, one to prepare arguments advocating voter approval of the measure, known as the pro committee, and the other to prepare arguments advocating rejection of the measure, the con committee. Committee statements will appear in the local voter's pamphlet. Committee appointments had to be submitted to both, or will have to be submitted to both Snohomish and King Counties by August 2 of this year. And state law stipulates that each committee shall have no more than three members. However, the committee may seek the advice of any person or persons, including those who've expressed an interest in serving on the committee. Public notices were issued for both measures, in the Seattle Times and on the city's website. Notice of the proposed fireworks ban was also published in the Bothell Reporter. Due to the Bothell Reporter's publication schedule, there was insufficient time to publish the streets and sidewalks measure. Both measures were advertised multiple times on social media. The notice solicited letters of interest for both measures, and required that they be submitted by Monday, July 11 at 5:00 p.m. Regarding the fireworks ban advisory measure, the city received seven letters of interest for the pro committee, and 10 letters of interest for the con committee. Those names are as follows. For the fireworks ban pro committee, Charlotte Hingle, Bonnie Riggs, John Carpenter, Judy Carpenter, John Steele, Richard Molitor, and Chris Parker. For the con committee for the fireworks ban, Ginger Warren, Jerry Farley, Douglas Taylor, Stanton Weisner, Karen Gower, Brianna Bennett, Apollo Furman, Robert Hartzog, Stuart Tenney, and Brad Sabranki. Regarding the streets and sidewalks levy lid lift, the city received four letters of interest for the pro committee, and didn't receive any letters of interest against the measure. Because we received no applications for the con committee on the street and sidewalk levy, the counties may or may not appoint committee members for that committee. For the pro committee, Susan Schweitzer, Catherine Touson, Bill Moritz, and David Habowitz. All the committees are required to submit statements for inclusion in the voter's pamphlet no later than August 11 for King County, and then August 16 for Snohomish County. Rebuttals are due no later than August 16 for King County, and August 19 for Snohomish County. And once you've made your selection tonight, the city clerk will be in touch with each of the designated committee members tomorrow, and will provide their names and contact information to both counties. Emails that were received from each of the interested persons have been included as attachments to the agenda bill. You have them there. And at this point, Mr. Mayor, I request that the council consider the candidates and make your selections.
Thank you. So I don't remember the process we've done for this in the past. Does any councilmember that's been here a while, do you remember, recall what we've? Councilmember Agnew?
After talking to Mr. Giulio, I think what he recommended us doing is go into executive session, have a discussion on each of the candidates, pick our candidates, and then come back out on the diast and inform everyone who we chose.
Is that for, I thought that was for the committees that we point for. Yeah, and it is a ballot committee. City Attorney, do you have any?
Let me pull up the Open Public Meetings Act.
No.
Sorry. I know.
Should we go to recess?
I assumed that we would have the list of candidates like we do for the boards and commissions, and then we just vote on paper copy. But if that's not the case, I mean, we could, we could write our selections down, and then hand them to the clerk, and then she can tally.
So in looking at the Open Public Meetings Act, RCW 423110 for executive sessions, you can retire to executive sessions to evaluate qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office, and then to discuss qualifications of an applicant for public employment. And so I don't think that the, this, these committees would fit into either of those categories.
Yeah, I recall, that's what I recall, that, you know, we usually go to executive session and have interviews of candidates for like the planning commission, that he said, you can't, we shouldn't do that anymore. We should do that publicly. So, thanks, Assistant City Attorney, or City Manager. So I guess we should write down on a piece of paper for the city clerk, which candidates? Are you ready for this? All right. Does everybody have a piece of paper? Councilmember Freed, you got a better idea?
Just for clarification, we can't just accept all that.
You only can pick three for each committee, yeah. I mean, they still can participate, it's just you have to have three that you submit to the counties to have on the ballot.
And then obviously, nobody signed up for the con committee for streets and sidewalks, so.
That'll be the easy one.
That would be very easy. Okay. And then you made a statement that we've done executive committee for, like, interviews before. We just didn't, we suspended video recording, but we've never done an executive session for our boards and commissions.
Is that how we did it? Because I know we had it in that room, but there wasn't any recording at all.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, anyhow, they said we should do it publicly in front of the camera and everything, so.
And to clarify, that would be for the interview process only. The deliberations as to which candidate you like best, that can be done in executive session. But the interview questions is something that should, in the future, be public.
Okay. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I was kind of curious. Because some of these statements are very limited, I wondered if anybody who submitted is in the audience and wanted to make a statement.
Is there anybody here in the audience that wants to be on the pro or con committees for either ballot measure? Are they here and would like to make a statement? And like to make a statement is the big part there? Okay. Seeing none, we're on our own.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Sandberg.
I know that these ballots, I probably would be available for public record afterwards. I just wanted to say on the record that my choices for the pro con committee are based on whether that person is a resident of the city. We got a, we got some applicants for people who didn't live in the city, and so I thought that was important to reflect what our own citizens are thinking. And then I also weighted pretty heavily how they explain themselves and why they were interested in serving on the committee. Some of them just said we were interested in serving in one committee or the other, and didn't elaborate on their passion for the subject. And then I also looked for geographic diversity in the city, which was difficult, because, again, some of our applicants didn't give their addresses.
Deputy Mayor.
So I would echo that. The one person that I know is not a resident, but I have considered her, because I've had some email conversations with her, is Charlotte Hingle. She does live outside the city, however, I thought she might have something of value to add, because she's an ER nurse. And so if we don't end up choosing her, I would hope that she would still be able to participate and provide some of her real-life experiences as far as what she sees in the ER.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Sandberg.
I think that's a really good point, that, and Mr. Trosen brought that up as well, that we have to, we're limited to select three people, but certainly, anybody who applied and would like to, you know, help draft the statements, please, by all means, either get in touch with people who are selected, or maybe those folks can reach out to the other people that weren't selected, because the voter's pamphlet statement is probably the single most important factor that voters consider in voting for a measure. And so it's really important to have a great statement, whether it's pro or con.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you.
Thanks for entertaining us, while we fill this out.
Yeah. So is there a list of addresses?
Just what you have in the emails.
Just go to the emails?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, is there any staff recommendations?
I don't, do you have any staff recommendations?
There's no staff recommendation. And I would just point out that, as the city clerk advises, there's no requirement to be a resident of the city of Bothell. In fact, there's no requirement that you be a registered voter. You just have to be an interested person to serve on one of these committees. Having said that, I'll tell you that all of the applicants for the pro ban committee, with the exception of the one person that Deputy Mayor mentioned, are residents in the city of Bothell. All of the applicants for the con on the fireworks ban are also members, except for Ms. Karen Gower, who's not a member, or not a resident of the city of Bothell. Mr. Farley did not give an address. And for streets and sidewalks, two are, the only two who have no address given are Susan Schweitzer and Catherine Touson, but the other two are residents of the city of Bothell.
Deputy Mayor, when you're done, go ahead and pass them down.
I thought I'd share the little that I know. I do know that, in case it matters to anyone, I do know Bonnie Riggs lives in Snohomish County. I looked it up. And I know Schweitzer and Catherine Touson, their names are familiar from the NSD discussion group, so they're, they're obviously active in schools.
I'm sorry. I'm just taking notes.
So I said, I know that Bonnie Riggs lives in Snohomish County. As Councilmember Sandberg pointed out, it'd be nice to have a range of where residents live. And then for the streets and sidewalks, I recognize the names of Catherine Touson and Susan Schweitzer as parents who are involved on the NSD discussion group on Facebook.
Councilmember Freed?
In the past, when we've had, like, interviews for boards and commissions that go unanswered, we allow for another week for people to apply. Can we do that for the streets and sidewalks con committee applicants?
Can we do that?
Do we know about, when do we have to get this to the county?
We could do that. The deadline is August 2 to file the names with both counties.
So if they made a decision this coming Tuesday, that would still get us to the county in time? So the answer is yes, you could extend that deadline.
Is there any assistance among the council to extend the deadline for the con ballot measure for the streets and sidewalks?
Yeah, I support that.
You support it, Sandberg?
Support extending the deadline for the con.
Councilmember McNeil?
I also will support it.
All right. Don't think we need to go further on that. So we'll delay on the appointment to the con committee for the streets and sidewalks ballot measure until next week?
Can I say something about that?
Sure.
I don't think it's fair. They have the same deadline. They have the same deadline as everybody else.
So when you guys are done filling out your ballot, please pass them this way? Or I guess pass them to the clerk? We're just, we're just writing them down on paper.
Just one sec, I want to.
That sounds great. Let's take a, let's start back up at 7:00 PM. All right, we're back from recess. We're on AB 16-128, the appointment of pro and con committees for the fireworks advisory ballot and safe street and sidewalks levy, lid, lift ballot measures for the November 8th, 2016 election. And City Clerk, go ahead.
So the tallies are in. The fireworks for the, to write the ban against, for the, for the ban, Bonnie Riggs, Richard Molitor, and Judith Carpenter received the most votes. For the, against the ban, it would be Brianna Bennett, Ginger Warren, and Robert Hartzog. And regarding the streets, the pro ban is Catherine Tousen, Bill Moritz, and David Havillot.
Just writing them down there. Would you repeat them just one more time?
Fireworks for the, to write for the ban, Bonnie Riggs, Richard Molitor, Judith Carpenter. Against banning fireworks is Ginger Warren, I believe that's her name, Brianna Bennett, and Robert Hartzog. And regarding streets, we have Catherine Tousen, Bill Moritz, and David Havillot.
Okay. Great. And then for the, for the con committee, so I was told during the break that the con committee for the streets and sidewalks, that potential people that want to write the statements, they can actually contact the county directly. So do we still want to bring that back to our council meeting on next Tuesday? Or are we okay with just, people can still sign up to be on the con committee, they just have to do it through a different venue, which is through the, through the counties? Is anybody interested in doing that instead of bringing it back next week?
I am.
Is there anybody else interested in doing that instead of bringing it back next week? Councilmember Freed?
I'm happy to leave the control here in the city of Bothell's hands, make their decision by next Tuesday.
Anybody on this side? Councilmember Sandberg?
I'm willing to consider the, the options next Tuesday as well.
Okay. It's up to you guys. Okay, next Tuesday, it is for the con committee. So we're on to AB 16-129, which is, there's a discussion of public comment regarding downtown parking. Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. Could I get a motion to just ratify those names?
Oh, sure. Do we have a motion to ratify the names that have been read?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember McNeil, seconded by Councilmember Sandberg, to ratify the names that were spoken by the city clerk. Please vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Sandberg, or, I'm sorry, Councilmembers spivey absent and excused. So back to AB 16-129, downtown parking management, and we have David Boyd to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I have a very brief presentation here to share with you, just to, to recap the, what we discussed last week, and, and then address the issues that were in the packet tonight. Last week, we reviewed background material from previous plans and studies, including the 2009 parking study shown, the cover shown here, the downtown subirary plan, and city hall transportation technical memo. I gave a present issue, presentation of issues and options for both how and who could do parking enforcement. We had a discussion of the need for outside technical expertise, and we addressed question, I addressed questions for council, and received, I think, some really good feedback from council on the parking issues. Tonight's pack includes the staff responses to the issues raised last week. It includes excerpts from the downtown subirary plan regarding transit facilities, as well as from the 2008 downtown transportation needs analysis about transit facilities. I've also was able to include an executive summary of the Kirkland downtown parking study, as was requested. I just received the, the Redmond downtown study, which I believe was emailed to you. And we also included a revised draft of the preliminary scope for downtown Bothell parking study by Transpo. And we have Stephanie Hurstine from Transpo here, if you have any further questions about that. Additional material provided includes that Redmond Parking Strategies Report that came to you today. I just received it this morning. The, you may or may not have received in your email a copy of the King County Metro Alternative Transit Options Study. And if you did not receive that today, I'll make sure that you do get it. And I have a request in to University of Washington Bothell to get their parking study that they did, that Transpo did for them. It is, has been in draft form, so they, but they are going to be releasing it on the 22nd, so I will send that to you as soon as, as we have that. Tonight's staff report, just briefly, bullet items that it addresses that were raised last week by council, include expanding the time-limited parking areas, defining parking spaces for most efficient use. There were questions about a city parking garage or lots that were raised in the downtown plans, parking management plan section, as well as questions about management of the city hall parking garage and optimizing public use of that. There were questions about lessons learned to date, metered parking, charging tenants for parking in addition to rent. We discussed the ambassador versus a cost recovery enforcement model. Increasing the parking requirement was, was discussed, exploring solutions to employee parking, and finally, Six Oaks covering enforcement on their frontages. Those are all items that were brought up by council in the discussion. And on the Six Oaks issue, I did show this last week, but they, they are contracting out management of their structured parking, and there is a possibility with the code amendment of having that same outside firm do management of their, their on-street parkings, parking on their frontages. So the, the main thing I wanted to address tonight is that, and it was addressed in the, in the staff report, is that to fully address, address those issues, and, and we agree that with council that those are all issues that do need to be addressed, it really does require more time and expertise than, than staff has available. Thus, the, the need that we're bringing forward again to, to bring a parking assault on board, with a phase contract that addresses the council priorities before proceeding with any potential future phases. And for that reason, we've reduced the initial amount requested to match the preliminary scopes, Phase 1 of $25,000 to $40,000. And that portion of that page that, that is in your packet has been in the packet with some revisions this week for the last two meetings, is up on the screen, and we can come back to that. So next steps, I'm happy to entertain any questions from council. And the, again, the response regarding the King County Metro alternative studies, I think came, was sent late today and may not have had the attachment, so I'll make sure that that happens. I'm, I'm willing to, I'm happy to discuss any other questions you may have. And then we will move on as a public meeting to take public testimony, discussion, and direction on approaches to parking management. Any additional analysis desired would be appreciated. And then I, we would ask council to approve moving forward with hiring a parking consultant for the Phase 1 work. And then we would be coming back and, on September 6th for the initial public hearing, at which time we propose to pass some initial code amendments to allow limited commissions to start enforcement, particularly with the Six Oaks support, and temporary paid parking lots to make best use of those existing service lots that remain. And then beginning discussions on parking provisions and other aspects of an overall parking management plan. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
So regarding this proposed study, what is the timeline for that?
Well, we would, we feel that before we can really get into discussions of what adjustments we should make to the parking requirements, we need to get some background data on utilization at the existing developments we've had, particularly Six Oaks, the 104, and the Village and the Village of Beersley Crossing. That'll give us a clearer picture of what kinds of adjustments need to be made. So, the hope would be to at least have some initial data to present on September 6th, if we can move forward. We would probably need to do some additional data collection in the fall, so that we're not just basing it on summer data. And wrapping up the first phase in the fall, and, and then, if, in, in the process of doing that, we feel that there's need to, to move into that phase two study, then we, the council would have a chance to, to authorize that. And then, to do the full parking management plan, if, if council feels that's the direction they want to go, that would most likely be after the start of the year.
So, I guess I'm, what I'd like to see, and I don't know how other people feel, but would that, so that first round, potentially, we could make some parking ordinance changes with our one, once a year update?
The code changes don't-
Oh, sorry, that's ordinance, not, not con plan. Sorry, I mixed those up.
Yeah.
Because I, I'm really interested, knowing what we know already, that the .75 per bedroom isn't working. I guess I hesitate to do a study that puts it out further, that gets us that many more apartment buildings that we already know are going to be underserved for parking.
So, our intent is to, to bring that code amendment forward for approval this year, this fall. But we do feel that before we change the, the requirement, that we really need to have a better understanding of what the utilization rate it really is, and what, what that number should be, rather than just picking an arbitrary number, or making a guesstimate of what it should be.
I can understand that argument. At the same time, do we have any idea of what other apartment buildings are coming online? Or, I, I want to stop the bleeding, frankly, at this point, and I feel like if a study is going to prevent us from doing something now, I'm not interested in the study. But if the study's going to give us something to work off of this year, then I am. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, we've got a, I don't know how many, 150-room apartment building going on 102nd and Main, we've already missed that boat. It, it just is accumulating, the parking issues are accumulating, and we're, we're going to do studies when we know it's not working. That's what I am concerned about.
Yeah. Well, the, the problems are, that we've experienced so far, are with Six Oaks and the mixed-use development, and, and the balancing of those different mixes within the parking, and how that parking requirement was applied there. So, we've already taken some steps to, to mitigate those issues, in how we're approving projects following that. But we can come back to you in September with some proposals, some, some ideas about interim measures that you could take while we do the further data collection, and come up with a, a more permanent solution in terms of the, the parking requirement.
So, can I ask, the building, I don't know what it's called, on 102nd and Main, that's going up?
The Mercantile Building?
Yes, the Mercantile Building. How many units is that?
122.
And how many parking spots are available?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
By code, how many parking spots would be available?
It would depend on the mix of units. So, it's, it's by bedroom, so, so it is like, as most of the developments we've seen to date, mostly studios and one bedrooms, but there are a few two bedrooms, and there may be a couple of three-bedroom units in that. So, I can, I can certainly bring that, those numbers back to you.
I would be interested in learning that, just because even if it's 20 spots below the number of units, that's 20 spots that are going to be looking to park in our downtown.
Yeah, I, I do not believe that it's less than the number of units in the, in the building, but I'll, I'll confirm that and get that number to you.
Okay, great, thank you. I do appreciate all the studies, I just, I haven't had an opportunity to, to read them all yet.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I had a, I had a couple of questions earlier today that I don't think went out in an email. One of them was, this, this study, it's a study, not a master plan, correct?
It would start out with a, a study, the, the phase three does include basically a strategic plan, a downtown plan, management plan, or a could, if that's the direction that, that we want to go to.
Okay, and do we have an idea of the boundaries of that? Are we also including the area over by Cascade, UW Bothell and Beersley?
That is certainly one area that we want to get parking utilization data from, since it's one of the three that, projects that's, that's up and running. Whether we would be doing any of, any of the measures like time limited parking out there on the streets, which we don't have out there now, that, that would remain to be seen.
But that would be part of the study?
We, that could certainly be considered, yeah.
Okay, because I know, I mean, the campus is ever-growing, and we're starting to see more buildings being put up over there, so that, that would be good to have that included within the study. What about, is it cost between 25,000 and 40,000, I think is what the numbers were that you showed? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, for the phase one study.
So, I think earlier we heard that there was a potential for a grant from the port, is there, for another project, the Canyon Park study, is there any grants that may be available, especially since we're, we're looking around transit centers?
I, I got that question from the Assistant City Manager, and I did have a brief discussion with the CD and Public Works Department heads about that, and that came up, that maybe some of that could be used, but I think that, that we'd have to look at the criteria, and whether, whether it makes sense to carve out some from Canyon Park, or if, or if that's really the, the best candidate for that grant. And, don't really have any other thoughts. In, in last week's packet, there was, there was mention of possibility of hotel motel tax money, that, again, may not be the best fit. And I will do some research with the folks that did the recent studies in Kirkland and Redmond, to see if, if they know of any, but off, just off the top of our heads, we don't know of any specific grants that would be available for that.
Okay, but you will look into it. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Sandberg?
We've received a lot of studies, so forgive me if this is a stupid question, but in your presentation, one of the first slides, you showed a 2009 parking study with a picture of Main Street. Did we get a copy of that study?
Not the full study, but I did present some graphics from it last week. That was the study where we looked at on-street park, at maximizing on-street parking, we did some re-striping to, to gain some stalls, we, we expanded, or changed some of the time limited parking, to kind of rationalize that, because there was a bit of a mishmash at that point.
But that was, at the time, a, a parking management plan for downtown?
It, I wouldn't call it a parking management plan, because it really was just re-striping the, the on-street parking, and, and it did establish a standard, we, we've used that standard, the, the size of spaces and the way we're marking the spaces for new development, like the parking around Six Oaks, but it wasn't a full parking management plan by any means.
And then, you mentioned at the end of your presentation, temporary paid parking lots as a measure, what, what, what were you thinking about with that?
Temporary commercial parking lots. There's been some interest in take, using some of the vacant lots prior to the beginning of construction, and, and managing them as paid parking lots, so that, that the owner receives some benefit from, from those vacant lots, and from the, the effort needed to, to manage those, those vacant lots.
And is that something that you envision the city would manage, or that private property owner who had the vacant lot prior to going vertical?
That would, in all likelihood, be a private venture, yeah.
And then, it seems like with the study, what you're looking for is parking utilization, current parking utilization at some of the, the newer developments that you mentioned. Could we have those developments self-report on their parking utilization?
We are working with them to get as much information as we can from them, it's been, I haven't had great success in that, but I'm working on it. We're also working with King County, they are updating their right-size parking calculator, and looking for developments that will let them do some counts, so that could help reduce the cost of the data gathering that we need to do. But we do need to make sure that the, the method that's used for the, that data gathering is, is consistent from project to project.
And we don't have interns or any other cheaper source of labor?
We're looking into that. I've been in touch with UW Bothell, and Transpo's provided a, sort of a job description for that. And, and so, we're, we're trying to look into every options that we can, and we're certainly open to any other ideas.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Councilmember Freed?
Great. David, did we have SDA do a study downtown, maybe 10 years ago?
That was the 2009 parking study where we changed the, the striping and signage, yeah.
Okay. And then, the diamond parking, I think that's now on this old Safeway site, I had to abide today around 2:00, it was completely empty, people just unwilling to park there now, since they have to pay?
Well, since that is not an allowed principal use in the downtown plan, we had to tell them that they needed to remove those signs, so-
Interesting.
Currently, they can lease parking to other permitted uses, and I, and I encouraged the management at Six Oaks to, to lease some of those spaces for their, particularly for employee parking, to help alleviate the need, at least temporarily, while we work on other solutions. I'm not sure what the status of that is, so, so there, there could be leased parking there in the meantime, but the, the notion is to come to you in, at September 6th, with a code amendment that would allow them to do that on a temporary basis.
Yeah, I'd love to see a building actually go in on that space, as part of our downtown redevelopment, hopefully that'll be moving forward. It seems that people just don't want to pay. But I was able to go to Social Grounds again today, thank you, ladies, for being here. You have a wonderful establishment, glad to have you here in, in Bothell, so, I go once a week, whether I need to or not. In regards to, I was surprisingly able to find a space out front, which was a great pleasure, I was like, almost shocked. I usually had to park on the backside or somewhere else to be able to find a spot, to be able to go in. Data gathering is extremely important, so, I guess this is more of a comment rather than a question, but I see having consistent data gathered, whether we implement it this year or not, is important. I think if you had to park a block away, I don't know that we have an extreme parking problem, but I think we really need to plan for what really is coming, maybe five to 10 years from now, and I think gathering information now would be appropriate to come up with a reasonable solution as we get forward, so, that's just a quick little comment, but thanks for your answers, appreciate it.
Councilmember Freed? So, Mr. Boyd, is there, is there a possibility that we could do somewhat of a hybrid with this, like, we could actually try to enforce, you know, not cut tickets, but start putting out, using the ambassador approach to, to try to limit people that are parking in the limited parking, to our limited parking stalls, just to make it so people can frequent the restaurants that have been built already?
Yeah. Well, the only resources we have to do that, that, that are legally allowed to do that under the current code, are, are, are police officers, that are authorized to, to write traffic tickets, even if they're just warnings, so, I think I probably should defer to the police chief to address whether that, there's any capacity for that. Are you, what we've been told is that, that they're stretched, stretched thin, the traffic officers, and have, they do do some parking enforcement, but it's, it's difficult. They can mark tires, but they can't always be, they're, they're not always able to come back two hours later to, to see if, if, if people are complying with the, the time limits.
He just gave my answer, which is, we have, we triage down, and time limited parking is the lowest. We go, we try to do life safety first, so we want to do traffic enforcement where there's areas of, like, high accident rates, or where there's neighborhood complaints, we, as you know, try to focus on the school zones, et cetera. So, timed parking is at the lower end. In addition to that, it's not something that you can go to and, and just write a ticket, you have to go there, and then you have to be able to return, and since we are, most of the time, having to use our patrol officers, you know, we, we have limited traffic officers, they can get calls, they get 911 calls, that's their primary response, and so, it's very sporadic. It's, it's not something that is a reliable source for daily or weekly emphasis at this point.
Okay. And then, so could we, so if we change the, can we change the code, or is it an RCW in place, that we have to use officers to patrol parking?
So, there, you, you can negotiate that certainly, and that's what many cities have done, and then you do have to change the code, I should defer to the city attorney on what the process is, but it, it's absolutely something that can be done.
Negotiate that with the labor union, or who do I negotiate that with?
You negotiate that with the labor union, but then you also have to go ahead and change the code to allow non-commissioned, you give them a limited commission, and that's where, for example, Kirkland, they use non-commissioned parking enforcement people, so, they've changed their code to give a limited commission to be able to write infractions or parking, parking citations.
Or at least warnings? What about warnings?
Yeah, or warnings.
Can anybody write warnings, or does it have to be?
Well, the, you need to have the authority to be able to do, enforce that area of the code, and again, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney for-
The chief is correct, you would need to have a limited commission in order to do warnings as well, because it's one of the police powers, and it would need to have the authority of law behind it.
Because I got a warning, parking here at city hall, like, right after it was built, and I, I don't know if it was a police officer, I wasn't there, so-
That was because in the contract we have, and I think Dave can speak to this, in the contract for city hall, there was a, a provision for that.
So, outside of the public right of way, the, the rules are different, so, and, and tenants of Six Oaks have let us know that they've gotten not only warnings, but fines for not parking in the, the proper spaces there, so, within the structure. But the, what we are proposing to bring on September 8th, would allow limited commissions, both for police support officers, or for private consultants to do, do parking enforcement in, in whatever mode, ambassador mode, or, or cost recovery mode that the city wants to pursue.
And you said that would come, I'm sorry, I kind of missed that last part, so you said that would come as part of the code amendments this year, that you're proposing to come back in September?
I'm proposing to have those ready to adopt at that initial public hearing, and then, we would move on as we get the data with, with the other code amendments.
Yeah, because I think at some point, we're going to have to start doing, I mean, I don't want to have people to pay tickets, but we should put warnings on cars so people get the message that that sign up there that says "to our limit" is actually, we're serious about it.
Right. So, and, and it's really not a, the idea at this point isn't to raise money by, through tickets or, or metering, but to get people to, to comply with the code, so that, so that the businesses and the residents have the parking that is intended for them.
Okay. And HR director, are we, are we at a place where we could actually try to negotiate that with the labor union, or where are we at in the cycle for the police?
It is, once I get the, the green light from the attorney, I could work with the chief, and we could, we could work with both our guild and our AFSMI labor unions to negotiate a memorandum of agreement.
Just, we could just do it under a memorandum, we have to wait for the cycle?
Right, we would do it through a memorandum of agreement.
Okay. Well, I'd be a lot more comfortable with a one-year-long study if we start taking measures now- Okay. Well, I'd be a lot more comfortable with a one-year-long study if we start taking measures now, because I think that would actually help with the data collection if people understood and knew that those two-hour parking limits were going to be enforced in the city of Bothell. So with that, and those are my questions. I think this is our new format, where this isn't a public hearing, but we wanted to ask if there's anybody in the public that would like to provide three minutes of public comment on this item. Go ahead, come up to the mic and give your name for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. And council members, my name's Darren Armstrong. I'm the silent co-owner of Social Grounds Coffee. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of parking. My notes are pretty trashed here, so I'm going to wing it. Obviously, Six Oaks can't accommodate parking. We know that. But we know it's the beginning of a larger problem with the development of the downtown area. We get to hear, and I don't know if it's healthy, but we get to hear the complaints of the residents and our other customers and other businesses in the area. So we understand that the city doesn't want to necessarily subsidize parking enforcement, but it is hurting our business. And I think representatives from Amaro are here too, to state the same thing. You know, we'd like to remind ourselves that the revitalization project is a destination place for gathering residents, businesses, and visitors. And with the compounding problem, I think it's, we're just going to see a hard time with the ability to park. I think you're lucky to find a space, especially on the weekends, in front of Six Oaks. We originally negotiated parking, two-hour parking, 15-minute parking and disabled parking in our lease with Main Street Properties. They complied with the city cooperation. And we've proven out in the last 12 months that without enforcement, it doesn't work. So... Really, ultimately, enforcing the current parking is one issue, but we need to recognize the future growth of the city. And we don't know what the new structures are going to accommodate the parking needs necessarily for all residents, employees, and visitors. But Bothell is a city people are talking about regionally. And we urge the city leadership to perform due diligence and alleviate some of the immediate problems in the short term to help businesses and residents cope and keep the strong vision for Bothell as a model for other communities in the area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Please, just give your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Amy Marthaler. I'm also an owner of Social Grounds. And I just wanted to mention the success of monitoring that parking. I think I called the City Hall to find out how I can report the violations that were happening in front. And they said, "Call 911, report a parking violation." And I did that day after day after day, and I felt horrible about it because I know that's not where their time should be spent. But we had customers coming in a week later, like, it was so weird. I was driving by and it was completely empty. There was nobody parked in front, and as it should be. So after just one week of having it monitored day after day and warnings being issued, it had a huge impact. So that's just a success story of just having it monitored and just issuing warnings. I mean, people don't want to get tickets. So if they get a warning, they know that there's going to be consequences, and that's just what's lacking right now. So I just wanted to share that, that it does work, and I feel like that's the most manageable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please give your name for the record.
Patrick Ewing, former council member. So as a council member who argued against reducing the residential parking numbers and voted against reducing it, I'm unhappy to say I told you so, but here we are. So I'm right there with the deputy mayor that you need to stop the bleeding. Don't let the situation get more out of hand. I think you don't have to pick a number out of the air, as was stated by staff. You can roll back the pre-existing method. You can do your study in the meantime and find out if those numbers that we used to have were the correct number, or if there's some number in between. So I would take that action as soon as possible to roll back the pre-existing parking methodology downtown. And I don't know if there's a way to have a more, I don't really like moratoriums, but you potentially could pass a moratorium to not allow new permits to vest until the new code comes into effect. Or maybe there's a hybrid approach where you could have a moratorium unless they would voluntarily meet the new numbers that are coming in. So something to think about, but I would take action right away to stop the bleeding. Thanks.
Any additional public comment? Please come up and give your name for the record.
I'm Mike Robinson. I live a block up the street in the residential area. I'm really shocked that the city is so unprepared on this parking situation. This has been one of the biggest problems in the city of Bothell with the merchants and the business community forever. And now we act like it's a brand-new problem when we're inviting more and more and not making any provisions for any of this. And the .4 or .5 per bedroom and stuff is absurd. That's designed for a whole different kind of community than we have here. And the public transportation that we have here is way different than the other areas around the region that are being brought online and that people don't have to have cars. This is a different kind of reality here, and, you know, we're digging deeper and deeper into the hole. There's got to be some provisions that are meaningful to address reality. And as everybody is talking, it's already too late. We've got to be ahead of the game on this. So let's get proactive and make it happen. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Please give your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Nick Wiltz. I'm the owner of Amaro Bistro. I just wanted to add some of my own observations. I know you're aware that parking is challenging. A couple of the things that have been interesting for me to see are, one, we have a janitor that comes and cleans the restaurant in the evenings. She comes at about 12:30, 1:00 a.m. and can never find parking within a block or so of the restaurant. That leads me to believe that those stalls are all being filled by people who are residents. I think some of these people leave and go to work during the day, and some of them open up. But many of them are occupied all day or multiple days, but certainly there isn't a single spot in the late evening. I, you know, I think that calling the police is impractical, and it's not the way I want the police officers to be working. But I do wonder if we see cars that are there for a really extended period of time. I would assume that we can call, and maybe it wouldn't be a high priority, but if the car is there for a week or more, they eventually can come and ticket it or give a warning or whatever they have to do. At my restaurant, guests do tell us regularly that they would dine with us or dine more frequently if parking was easier. This just comes through comment cards, posts on Facebook and Yelp and things like that. We do fill up the restaurant from time to time, and so people figure it out. The parking in the City Hall garage is wonderful, and that's helped us a great deal. Ironically, people do say that that's almost not close enough. Maybe people learn to get used to it in a city that's growing like Bothell. But it's surprising to me, but you do hear people say that they don't want to walk that far across the street. They want to be on the same block or in the building if possible. It doesn't appear that, to me, that anyone honors the parking limits. And I think that other people have said the same thing. So it would be nice if they did, but if it's not enforced, then people don't appear to be honoring it at all. So, thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Ready for council discussion? Do you want to council discussion, or you want to ask a question? Sure. Will you entertain a question, sir?
Great. Just was curious, Six Oaks charges their residents for parking. I think it's $95 per parking spot. Those are like Redmond prices. Downtown's $135 to $175. How many spots do you see that are open for residents in the evening in the building? Like, have you kind of thought about that or not?
Not very many. I'm not sure it's possible that, I would assume that all of the spots that are available in the building are sold and are rented by a tenant in the building. I do watch it. I primarily, we have a certain number of spaces that are in the evening reserved for our guests, not very many, but we do have some. Those are the ones I watch most closely, of course. But in general, I feel that in the evening, the garage is full.
Okay, yeah.
A handful of spaces vacant, but not a lot.
Okay, that's great.
I guess the other thing I was going to say, since I'm back up here, is another point that occurred to me was that in communities near us, and I've lived in Bothell for 20 years, places like Mill Creek, Kirkland, Woodinville, it seems easier. I don't know. I think Mill Creek has 32 restaurants in their town center, and it feels a lot easier to be able to park and go to one of those restaurants.
Yeah. I'm just wondering how we can quantify the issue of residents in the building not wanting to pay for parking and looking for free alternatives. And if we have a solution as the city, going to the new owner now of the building and saying, "You can't charge for parking," or something, "Allow your people to park in your building." Otherwise, you're putting pressure on the city. Or if there's a fee we charge or something, to figure that out. Hopefully, our consultant will have an answer.
Well, and I think that even if people park in the building and have two cars, one of them's out on the street. I had an employee who lived in the building and worked for me, and she and her husband had two cars, and they had one spot in the building, and the other one, they moved around outside, so...
I miss her. She was a great employee, by the way.
Yeah, she was.
And thank you for the risotto the other night, and the teremusi was tremendous.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Any other public comment? Please?
Something that I should have brought out before, but isn't the solution to this with the developers? We're pretty well-built out where we are. If we put more big buildings and don't put enough parking spots for the people, what's going to happen? It's a no-brainer. We are built out. There's no place for these cars to go, that these people don't have any place else but to park in front of the restaurants and things. It's all over. So, I mean, there's like, is there some mystery here that we have? You know, what do we do? We've got to provide more parking if we put more buildings in. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Please come up. And give your name for the record.
I am Sarah Hale, and I have the fun job of being the manager at Six Oaks. Clearly, there's just, there's not enough parking, not for the residents we have now and not for the residents coming in, not for the visitors. We lose rentals every week because we don't have parking. We have a waitlist for parking that we go through every month, but it's never zero. Couple of things that I've noticed is it gets worse when the games start at Popkinie. You can't find a parking spot within blocks. Like, people are parking way up here to walk down to the apartments. Around the building also, two-hour limit with no timed is rare. I mean, residents need to park at 2:00 in the morning. You can't move your car at 2:00, and then 4:00, and then 6:00. So there needs to be a structure around there as well, and then just more management. We try to work with the owners of the businesses, but it's difficult when we don't have support. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please give your name for the record.
My name's Pam Pfeifer, and I am a Six Oaks resident, and I'm one of the lucky ones who has a parking place, and I pay for it gladly. I mean, I just moved here from Chicago, and I am grateful to be able to pay for a parking place so that I always know that I have a place to put my car. The thing that concerns me is that Six Oaks doesn't provide that opportunity for anybody who is a resident. I'm sure the property to the north that's going up isn't going to provide parking places for every resident who wants one and is willing to pay for one. And I would assume that the place that's going up eventually to the south of Six Oaks is probably in that same boat, because I don't think they have to according to code. I agree with the gentleman who lives in the residential area. You know, if you're not asking the developers to make those accommodations, or if you're not requiring them to do it, then maybe Bothell needs to put up a multi-story municipal parking lot. I mean, you have to have a place to put all these cars. If you're going to attract all of the businesses and the residents that you are trying to attract to Bothell, and God bless you for it, I'm happy that this is, you know, becoming a more urban place, then you have to accommodate the cars.
Is there any more public comment? Seeing none. So we move into council discussion, and at the end of this, we want to try to provide direction to staff. So if your discussion can be around direction, that'd be appreciated. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Sandberg.
Last week, I discussed the reasons why I wasn't in favor of doing a parking management study now. I thought that there was some work that we needed to do as a city internally first to essentially get some of the low-hanging fruits, solve some of the easier problems before we go forward with a $25,000 to $40,000 parking management study. And I would just like to point the council members to the data collection that we seem to think is so important in this Phase 1 study is one or two days of data collection. So it's hard to make, to draw any significant conclusions from that limited amount of data. And so last week, I spoke, and I sent a list of the things that I wanted the city to accomplish before we did a study. And I'm just going to, so then I made, I heard some response back. But, so now I've made the list a little bit shorter, and hopefully it will stick a little bit more this time. First of all, before we do a study, I would like, as staff is prepared to give us on September 9th, the code change language that allows us to contract with a parking management company that can then in turn be reimbursed by Six Oaks. So currently, our code does not allow a private parking management company to manage park, on-street parking, because that's public right-of-way. And so, as staff has explained, we need code language change to allow that ability. And so if we, if there is parking management provided around Six Oaks, like they do interior to Six Oaks, I think that that addresses a lot of what I've heard. People say there's no consequence to anybody's actions. And so there needs to be parking management, not just off-street, but also on-street. And we can accomplish that with a code change. Number two, we need to take a hard look at that parking reduction, which was the .7 stalls per bedroom. I really don't think it works. Like Deputy Mayor says, we need to stop the bleeding. One of the reasons why we, the council, endorsed that approach, that reduction in parking requirement, is because that, the argument was that improved affordability. Because, you know, structured parking costs money. And so you don't want to overpark, because then that's going to trickle down and impact affordability. Well, now what we have are really expensive units and a huge parking problem. So I feel that the .75 stalls per bedroom doesn't work. We didn't even, when you look back on that code, we didn't even require that developments of a certain size provide for car-sharing service. I mean, if people knew, if residents knew, "Oh, I could car-share among three cars for, you know, 100 residents," I would be more likely to give up my car. But we don't have those kind of provisions, and people are not going to give up their cars. So we need that, we need that language back to us ASAP so that we don't incur more developments that are grandfathered in under this reduced parking requirement, because it's not impacting affordability in a positive way. We're just getting a parking problem. Because it's not impacting affordability in a positive way. We're just getting a parking problem. The third thing that I want us to do before we pay for one or two days of data collection to inform a parking management study is I really want us to look at the utilization of the City Hall parking garage. People don't know that they can park there for free, as it is today. There's a sign out there that says "public parking," but it doesn't say "free public parking." People still don't know that all day long, they can park for free in the lower level. They don't know that, and I'm not sure I know this either, that every stall in the parking garage is free on evenings and weekends. Because we started out with a culture of not encouraging parking there, and people haven't gotten past that. And so, we need to, we need to have an understanding within our own parking garage what the parking utilization is. Because one of the issues around parking is merchants-employees parking, which we heard tonight. And if we knew how many parking spaces we truly had available and how many merchants-employees parking was needed, we could potentially accommodate that through an agreement with the merchants. And I also mentioned last week that we, the parking lot is empty essentially from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So, why not have some agreement with Six Oaks or other residents to park in that parking garage? I don't know what, you know, what the value of that is, if it's free, if it's reduced, if it's significantly less than $95 so that it's affordable. But the space in here, in our garage, is entirely underutilized, and we need to really work towards a much higher utilization. And then, just one final thought. I, we're, we have this, two approaches before us, this ambassador approach versus a cost-recovery approach for parking, and I don't like either one. Because the ambassador approach is, you know, based on warnings, and it's nice. But it's also, according to the staff report last week, a $77,000 potential annual budget implication for that person. So, we would be paying $77,000 to have a parking ambassador. I don't like the cost-recovery approach, where you have to write enough tickets to cover the cost of $77,000, because the first time somebody gets a ticket, they're not coming back. Because that happened to me in another city, and I don't go back unless I absolutely have to. So, and that circles back to the argument which was brought up, is we need to make sure that development is providing for parking, adequate parking, so that we're not forced into this false choice, I believe, of an ambassador versus a cost-recovery approach. So, I would like us to take concrete steps, and there were more that I talked about last week, before we pay $25,000 to $40,000 for a Stage 1 parking management study. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to do next? Councilmember Freed?
Great. I've been trying to gather my thoughts here as I've been listening to everybody. I love hearing from the public as well. One of the most frustrating comments I've heard as I've visited with Nick or Social Grounds is, well, people will pull into the handicap parking at the bank, jump out of the car, run in to go do quick banking because they're only there for five minutes. Like, that just infuriates me. And I think that that 15-minute parking gets parked in for an hour. So, I really think that codes work if you implement enforcement, I guess is my thought. So, if people are getting tickets for parking in two-hour parking, they're going to find other alternatives to park. City Hall is an alternative to park. But sadly, because of our nature, and this, we're maybe all guilty of this, if you don't have a punishment, you're not going to go be a do-gooder sometimes. There's some people in society that are like that, right? So, I think about a lot of the parking that's happening up from Beardsley all the way up to downtown. If we enforce two-hour parking there, I think that would help our parking problem for the residents in that area highly. I mean, we implemented a program up on the hill that required permit parking within a neighborhood, and that's been successful. Could it be better? Yes. But it's still improved that situation enormously. And I think that's come through enforcement. So, I think it is right to have a cost-recovery approach. I think $77,000 can be supported quite easily with a $20 ticket. You ticket nine people a day, that's going to fully support the $77,000 cost to the city. And I think it's going to improve our city functioning, parking overall exponentially. Because once a few people get some tickets, they're gonna probably find the right alternative for parking, or they're going to consider in their mind, if they're eating for an hour, hour and a half at Pen Tye, that they're going to jump in their car and they're going to take off. But still, they're going to be, know that, people are going to learn after six months, if they come to downtown Bothell, they're going to find a spot, and they're going to know that we're going to implement proper parking principles. I mean, I go to Kirkland, I have to circle the blocks once or twice, but I want to go to Kirkland because I know through time, I'm going to be able to find a parking spot because I know that they enforce their two-hour parking. I know initially, it's frustrating to get a ticket, but maybe you think in your mind, you aren't going to go there. So, I hope that I'll make a motion unless others are going to make comments as well. I can wait. But I would certainly be in support of going forward with the staff recommendation to have a study. And I think we should move to implementing enforcement in parking in all downtown Bothell because I think it is the right thing to do, and I think overall, it will help improve. Couple more comments, I guess. Popkinie is a shared parking agreement with McMinimans. And I know I sometimes drive in the parking lot for McMinimans, and I get annoyed because I'm so lazy that I have to drive around to King County, or King County, to Popkinie, and it's only like another 100 feet for me to walk. I think the reality is we are designated city for growth here with the GMA. The way we've lived, me, for the last 42 years in the city of Bothell is changing. We are taking growth. The type of development we're having here is changing. So, the way that we've lived and thought is changing. We have to grow with the times. So, we're going to have to be willing to grow with the city as it does as well. So, I love the idea of people using the City Hall parking. That's how we built it. We received a lot of criticism for the parking that we put under this building. And the reason why we received it, and the reason why we built it, is because there is a need. And so, here it is. Let's use it. Let's advertise it. Let's sign to it from other parts of the city saying "City Parking" and point signs in this direction to come here. But thank you for your comments, and thanks for the time.
Who else would like to have a discussion? Councilmember Agnew?
I think we probably need to look at this in a number of different ways, and we need to get this thing right. Obviously, we have an issue. I think we need to change the parking policy of the per-unit-per-code and change that from the .75. I think we need to reemphasize, as Councilmember Sandberg and Councilmember Freed said, City Hall parking, it was built for the citizens, to use the citizens. Every time I've gone to Amaro, I've parked at City Hall and actually walked the block. It didn't seem that bad because it was downhill going there. Now, on the way back, it was another thing. I believe that we probably should enforce our parking. We have to hire an FTE to do that. So be it. I know we have to get this right because in the Kirkland study, it says that it costs $18,000 per parking stall. Let's look at it. Let's do a study. Let's figure out what we need, and let's move on.
Any further discussion from council? Councilmember, nope, Councilmember McNeil? Councilmember McNeil, let's go.
So, I also agree with the other council members. But looking long-term, I think we have a much bigger issue here, especially as we grow, and making sure that we're not just doing a study for today, but doing a study for the future. I was, I did, used to work in Kirkland, and I can tell you I was one of those guys that would go into my office real quick and think I'm going to be out in five minutes, but it took me two and a half hours, and next thing you know, I got a ticket. And I will raise my hand and say, "I've gotten three tickets in one day before in Kirkland." So, it does pay. It pays for itself, but it also reminds us that we need to continue to move because we do need to support the businesses in our downtown core. I also think enforcement and making sure that we have the enforcement in place is something we should do now. And I think I agree with other councilmember Agnew, who said that we possibly need to look at rolling it back. Because as we continue to build these larger buildings, if we don't take into consideration the problems that they're going to cause, the impacts that they're going to have within our community, it's going to continue to magnify until it's to a point where we cannot handle it anymore or have the space to handle it. And then, it's going to continue to burden the residents and the businesses to the point where it's going to start making it to where people are not going to want to come to Bothell. So, I'm hopeful that we're going to do the right thing and make the right decisions in looking forward at our growth and make sure that that growth and the developments are taking care of themselves. One interesting comment that I heard, the manager from Six Oaks comment today, that the residents don't have places to park. That's very interesting because when you build a building, you're supposed to build a building, they can handle the residents that go in that building. And if you are impacting the businesses that are also there to support the residents that live there, that's not a good combination. So, I think with some work, we work together, I think we'll make this right. Also, talking about Popkinie, there's a possibility of potentially a parking structure there, something that could help out with the businesses as well. If you look at the math, yes, $18,000 per stall. But if you have a way to enforce that, like a parking garage is $3 a day or $5 a day, that brings in revenue that can help pay for that parking structure. So, I think we have options. I think we need to look at those options collectively and work as a team, and I think we can, we can come up with a great solution. So, thank you for the time, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
I agree with a lot of what's been said. I still think the number-one thing is stop the bleeding, change the ordinance, and then I can support doing a study. Obviously, there are huge problems. I wondered, we haven't talked about designated spots. And I wonder if there could be designated spots, particularly near Six Oaks. I bank at BECU, and sometimes I go by in the day, and I can't find a spot. So, I think, well, I'll go there at night. There's no spots there at 10:00 either, so I can't do my banking literally five minutes. Yeah, I guess I could park at City Hall, but it would take me, you know, 20 minutes round trip for, you know, two minutes at the ATM. So, I wonder if there's, if that might be a solution, like designated spots for Amaro and Social Grounds in that block. To me, that seems to make sense. And I agree, for now anyway, it seems a perfect solution to have residents park overnight in City Hall rather than on the street, and I hope that we can work toward making that happen. I know it's not a permanent solution, but we have that time until the hotels go in to be able to do that. I don't see why we wouldn't try to work that out somehow, and maybe we could even make a little money for the city so we can pay for the parking study. I guess that's all I'll say for now. Thank you.
So, I have a couple of quick questions or comments, and then we'll open it up for a motion. So, I hope, and I heard this from staff last, I think it was last week, that we met, stop issuing reductions in parking requirements, please. I know there were some reductions that were allowed for Six Oaks, or a couple of different ones that compiled and reduced the amount of parking there. So, I would really like to emphasize that in addition to looking at the underlying parking structure per bedroom formula that we have. I agree that we should do parking enforcement. However, I think we should start off giving people a warning. But I do agree that, you know, at some point, you can only give out so many warnings, and you need to start enforcing the regulations with tickets. I would like to make sure we look at not using our officers to be doing this service. I think we can hire for a lot less cost and keep our police officers doing police officer duties that are a lot more important for police officers to be doing. These, I hope, I know Six Oaks' property managers here, I hope you let your tenants know that the parking is free in the parking garage in City Hall. I also think it's important that we do put a sign out that does say "free parking." I had a friend that sent me a picture of the parking garage on the Fourth of July parade, and he said, "Why doesn't anybody know to park here?" Because he parked there, and there was, it was basically empty on one of the busiest days in downtown. Let's see. And I do agree with the commentary that, you know, we do need to have parking built with the development that comes into our city. It's, we only have two options. It's either we do that, or the public has to subsidize a parking garage. And so, I think it's, personally, I would like to see development take care of the parking that it needs for the residents and the businesses that it builds. And I think that's all the comments I have. So, I would entertain a motion from any councilmember on what we want to do here. So, we need to pass a motion, I think, on the study, but it would also be probably beneficial for a motion to have some direction to staff about additional code changes. We'd like to see come back September 9th.
I was, yeah, I was just going to move the recommended action to move forward with Phase 1 of a parking management study, but I didn't have any further recommendations with that.
Okay. Is there a second to only move forward the Phase 1 of the parking management study? Or an amendment? No, no, you need a second. So, the motion fails.
That's fine.
Is there another motion? It's almost break time. Councilmember Sandberg?
I move that we direct staff to collect preliminary information that we've already talked about and include a review of the .75 parking stall per unit provision and other related parking provisions, and have that come back to us on September 9th, along with the code change that allows enforcement contracting on public right-of-way.
So, can I restate that just so it's clear what your motion is? So, you're looking for staff to collect data on the .75 parking stalls per unit or bedroom?
It's a .75 parking stall per bedroom requirement now.
Right.
I don't think we need to collect any data on that. I think we should just bring that back with the intent of increasing that parking ratio.
And have a staff, so you would like staff to come back with a parking ratio per bedroom or just a parking formula on September 9th? Is that fair?
Right, because they're already coming back with proposed code change language to allow enforcement by private parking company on public right-of-way. They're already coming back with that. And what I would like to add to that is also bring back language regarding increasing the parking stall ratio per bed unit that we, that exists in current code.
Okay. So, are you sure that it's, they already said they're going to do that on September 9th? I didn't see that in the packet, that they're going to bring back information on?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been, yeah.
Got it. You're sharp.
On September 6th, though.
So...
Or September 6th, sorry.
Oh, it's September 6th, not the 9th. Sorry.
So, anyway, what we're proposing to bring back is code language for limited commissions for parking enforcement and temporary commercial parking lots. We have not proposed bringing back proposed code language for changing that, the parking requirement without any data to base that on. But we can certainly come back with our best estimate of what might make sense and/or interim measures that might be applied while we do the study.
Okay. So, you second the motion? Okay. Can you repeat your motion one more time for us?
That we direct staff on September 6th to bring back code change language for, he said it better than I did, but parking enforcement on public right-of-way and temporary paid parking lots and the park, the current parking ratio for reconsideration.
And that's what you, what's said when you second it? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Freed?
I won't be supporting the motion. I like the intent that we're going to be changing things. The problem I have is we have opinions. Opinions need to be backed by data, or else they are not going to be as fully impactful as what we hope. So, my hope is that we would be able to move forward with the study as recommended by staff. So, I like to make an amending motion that we still move forward with the underlying request as Councilmember Sandberg has put forward, but I make a motion that we approve staff recommendation to implement the study so we have the data to back up our decisions.
I'll second that. So, the amendment would add item number four to the list, is to start Phase 1 of the study, and then that is in addition to the code changes to have non-officers to enforce the existing parking, temporary paid parking analysis, and then parking ratio code suggestions for September 6th. for September 6th. Yeah, so that we don't, we can only have police officers right now do parking enforcement, and the code changes would allow other services other than uniformed police officers?
So it would be contracted out, is what you're saying? Other than uniformed officers?
Or city police.
Further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sandberg?
I will be voting against the amending motion. Some on council were here when we changed the parking requirement before, and we changed that based on a King County model of parking and housing. And if people remember, it was some sliding scales, and then you could, you could arrive at a number. And we didn't have a lot of data to support decreasing our parking requirement from what we currently had, 2.75 parking spaces per bedroom. So we made the change away from the original requirement without a lot of data. And I'm suggesting that we do have quite a lot of data right now. We have a pretty lengthy staff report on the analysis of Six Oaks parking as a, a study case. And so I think we do have data to, and staff has mentioned that they would also bring back some preliminary information to help guide that decision on that parking ratio.
Good.
Again, I'm not, I'm not against a parking demand study sometime in the future. I think we have the opportunity to make concrete changes, see what the result is, and let that information also inform, more richly inform, a parking management study.
Good.
Clarifying question. So Councilmember Freed, your amending motion was to move forward with the study but base parking ordinance changes on that study?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the amending motion? So I'm just going to say, fantastic, we're on the same page. So I was here the last time we changed the, the parking ratio, and I was, we didn't have a lot of data to do that. So here we are, we're going to do it again with very little data. And I think it makes a lot of sense for $40,000 to look at what's going on and try to get a good balance between, so we don't overpark new development, and we also don't underpark new development. At the argument, the last time this came up and it was passed, and I believe I didn't support it, but that doesn't matter, we thought we were overbuilding too much parking for the new development. And I think it's important that if, we don't just swing right back to that, but we actually do study it and make an educated decision about what parking ratio makes sense. So I, I do, I will support the amending motion. I think we're ready to vote, unless somebody else wants to talk? Nope? Okay, let's vote on the amending motion. So the amending motion is to add the Phase 1 of the parking study? Let's see, here passes four to two with Deputy Mayor Deurer and Councilmember Sandberg in negative, and Councilmembers by the absent excuse. And so now we're back to the underlying motion, which is to do the code changes. I think everybody knows what these are, right? Okay. Any, any further discussion on the underlying motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmembers by the absent excuse. So we are at 8:15, so the council's going to take a 15-minute break and come back at 8:30, and we'll pick up from there.